So I would declare a forum with six of the seven school board members here. Approval of the agenda. I don't think there are any changes to the agenda, so I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published. There's second?
Second.
Discussion. See none, all those in favor of approving the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Workshop and potential referendum. I will turn it over to Dr. Carlson.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Dinner, once again, provided for by our food service. And so, acknowledge them whenever you see them, for that tonight. Kind of, not on the official end of the agenda, but I was just going to acknowledge Anita and Kate. And for, if everybody did not by chance see your email yesterday, just making everybody aware that Kate and Anita are the lone candidates for the April election.
Anita is really depressed about that because she wanted to have the forum, so she might need some counseling beyond that, though I think it's okay.
So.
We're great.
Anyway, so thank you. Thank you. So tonight, we have what I hope to be a very straightforward goal in the end, and it's, again, it's in the draft form to the board. You ultimately can decide how this will go tonight, but the goal for me is to do everything we can so that you, as a board, would be in a position that by the January 26th school board meeting, you are able to make a decision as a board whether to move forward with referendum questions for an April election or not. So, in the end, that's, that's the ultimate goal, to put you in a place to be able to do that. And like with anything else, some of you, well, we know, you're each perhaps in different places, just on questions, understanding, so that's key to tonight. So we have a plan set for tonight, but at any time, we want to make sure that you, at any point, can stop and we can head in a different direction once we get going, and do whatever we can so it's most beneficial to you in order to achieve that goal. We have a, as the night goes on, there's some Post-its there. If you have a thought, you can just jot it down, but if it's an item that's maybe a little related but separate, we have a parking lot up here. You don't have to get right up and put it up there, but at any point, you can put it up, and depending on what time we have, we'll try to come back to it and acknowledge those, or we will follow up after we adjourn tonight. We will end by 8:00 PM unless Cheryl decides differently. And I want to acknowledge Jay and the group behind you. And by the way, the seating tonight, we wanted to keep it as small. We started to set up for everybody, and it was just getting so large. And then when we set up over there, that big TV monitor is always in the way, so we're trying this. But also, there is maybe a little bit of vantage seated back there because they may have, I mean, depending on the discussion, they may be able to talk a little bit amongst themselves, too. But they are here as resource to your discussion tonight. There are some activities that are planned that you may, that you will break out, and even at that point, they may then hang around your group and so that they can be helping and respond to questions that you may have. So.
Dale, are many of those people also helpful that helped with the composition?
I want, yes.
That's our understanding.
Part of that acknowledgement.
Which is an incredible document.
Part of that acknowledgement, but I want to begin with, I want to begin with Jay. And so much of this has been, really, he's been the person that I've been able to rely on with this, and then, kind of putting the pieces together, as well as then utilizing the people behind you. And that's why they are identified to be here. Wendy Savasky is part of this group as well. She just could not, something came up, she could not be here tonight. We did meet, as several of us met yesterday afternoon, especially talking about the technology piece, and Wendy was part of that conversation. But thanks to Jay, the group behind you, a lot of work has been, a lot of discussion has been put in to just, not just prepare for tonight, but that ongoing Q and A document, and just a lot of the financial figuring and work with this. So thank you to all of you with that.
I just appreciate it, because Jay has the piece of the brain that I don't have. And what you do for us, to inform us when the public talks to us and asks questions, I'm just so appreciative of that.
The same goes for everybody who's behind you, too, because we rely upon them for their expertise, because on an issue as complex as this, no one heard, and you've been involved in complex organizations, you know that's true.
Yes.
And so they've challenged things that are in here, and provided good input, and been very helpful.
Yeah.
And I can't forget, I mean Christina in so many ways of just organizing everything for today and much of the work that we've done. But the people behind you, it probably doesn't take a lot to put it together that, with transportation, that piece tonight, Beth is here. With the buildings and grounds, that piece, John is here. And then with the technology piece, looking at Jan and Ryan and Bob. And let me just explain again, right now, the direction that we've been going and moving towards, right now with technology, is it's concentrated what would, what would be going to referendum, if that's the decision by the board. The focus is more on the middle school and high school at this point. That's the work that's been done. So that's why Ryan and Bob are here this evening, and we can talk more about that as needed.
If I may, Dale, and while these individuals have played specific roles, don't, don't think that the other leadership team members have not been engaged. We dedicated two full leadership team meetings to making sure that all leadership team members had input and offered perspectives, and as I said, challenged this. So, then the group as a whole, then as you all know, that if you're on the finance committee or buildings and grounds committee, or the technology committee, it's also gone through some vetting at those stakeholder levels as well.
So with that, I am going to turn it over to Jay, who's going to get us started with the presentation and the conversation, discussion. And, but this, we want to be pretty informal, and so at any time, ask the questions that you need to. Okay? All right.
So I'm going to spend five to 10 minutes covering some background, to make sure we're all common starting points. And should this be broadcast, I think it's important that we continue to communicate with our public, a little bit of the background, so they understand the connection of what's happening tonight with what's happened before tonight. Then I'm going to describe the activity we have planned, and get board input on that activity, to see if they support that, or would like to go in a different direction to meet the goal that Dr. Carlson described. So this is a restatement of the goal that Dr. Carlson did describe, related to the April 7th potential referendum, and the goal is to get the board closer to be able to decide yes or no, should we go to a referendum, in an effort to meet the fiscal sustainability goal. And if yes, what will be included in the referendum? And then, this is that fiscal sustainability goal, which serves as the starting point for even considering a possible referendum. The board approved this fiscal sustainability goal. The goal was initially to generate more revenue. The board later agreed to set an amount of revenue to be generated at $263, or approximately $990,000 per year. And the goal setting is a decision already made. We're not talking about that tonight, that's not included in our presentation. What we interpreted administratively, that we should change our focus to how do we best implement the decision, and what can we contribute to achieve the best possible outcome related to that decision. So as a foundation for the board's decision-making on the fiscal sustainability per pupil DMO, we've outlined a potential direction, and you've heard this before, generating revenue and applying that revenue to meet school district needs. So we have recommended a referendum as the means to generate the revenue, and three areas in which the added revenue would be applied, and those are technology, facility, maintenance, and fleet replacement. Wishing to provide the board with rationale, we administratively then contemplated, well, one of the questions that are going to come out of recommending a referendum and focusing on these areas. And we use those initial questions to formulate a draft of a question and answer document. This has been evolving over recent months. You, as board members, had input on that, whether you knew it or not, you were asking questions. Those questions were supplementing the administratively developed Q and A document. To assist the board evaluating the administrative recommendation for that draft referendum, items to be funded, ours as administrative recommendation, three action steps were implemented. We provided the board a copy of the draft Q and A document, and asked for a thorough review. Beyond asking for a thorough review, we provided the board members four reflection questions. The intent of the reflection questions was to promote a most critical review of the direction proposed in the Q and A document. And hopefully, this critical review creates an effective and focused review by the board that we can carry into tonight. And then third, this workshop activity was set. Hopefully, we'll identify strengths and weaknesses and opportunities to improve the board's ability to achieve back to the fiscal sustainability goal, $163 per pupil. So here's the reflection questions the board were asked to consider as they reviewed the draft Q and A document. First is identify what you believe are the three most important question and answer communications for the public. The second was to identify three of the Q and As that leave you with some degree of uncertainty. You read that, and you're just thinking, I'm not sure I get that, I support that, I believe that, some degree of uncertainty. Third, identify any Q and A items you believe are not relevant enough to even include in the Q and A document. And fourth, identify the three most important pieces of information you still need as a board member before considering taking action to advance or not advance a referendum question to the public. And the response to these four reflections has been compiled, and would serve as a starting point for the board's work here tonight. So back to the goal that we administratively have laid out, are there any questions before I introduce the activities associated with how we're going to work through those board reflections? You can ask questions at any time. Just to give some structure to what we do tonight. So let me share with you the activities we've planned around each of those questions then, and then we can get started with the activities. So the first question was identify what you believe to be the three most important Q and As contained in that document. And so what I would do for that activity is I would present the board input, the composite list. I'd ask the board members, if they're comfortable, to individually pick any one of the listed Q and As, the ones that you guys identified. Try to avoid duplication, other than to say, oh, I think that Tim picked really the most important one, but I'll go to the second one. And that's not to say in picking one, that any of the others are unimportant, only that you believe that this particular one is noteworthy and more for our community to know, one that you would want to maybe make sure was on the front of a brochure if the board decides to go to a referendum. And hopefully, this activity would acknowledge what is right about the information that's been presented in the Q and A, and it would serve as a foundation for future decision-making. That would be the first activity, the activity associated with the first question presented to the board. Activity number two, again, we present you the composite list that was developed by you as board members. In this one, we'd actually give you two dots, the little stick of dots. And what we'd ask you to do is place the dots next to the uncertainty Q and A that to you is of most importance. This one needs to be addressed. You place your two dots. Then we'd select the three that get the most dots, and ask board members to work either in a large group, or depending upon how many there are, you could break up into small groups, and you'd be assigned a task. Create a written record describing why it is important. And then, how's it going to be addressed? So we don't want to leave here just with why is this uncertainty important? How's it going to be addressed? So we have something to help us move forward. And then, if you did do small groups, because you're a full board, not small subgroups, you'd report out what your group did as an activity. The third task for the board was to identify any that were not relevant. And again, you'd look at the composite input from your peers on the board, break up the non-relevant Q and As to small groups, ask the small groups to evaluate these non-relevant items, you could do it as a large group, and say, if this is so relevant, do we delete it? Or do we modify it, because it has something there, it's just not getting the mark? Or should this just be merged with something else? Or you might identify some other solution to this thing that, well, at least initially was taken as non-relevant. And hopefully, this will be helpful in moving the board's direction as well. The third, what are the three most important still needing to be addressed? Again, starting with familiarizing yourself with the composite list, and then have the board, this one I think should be in large group activity, identify each important piece of information addressed. If I don't have this information as a board member, and at this point in time, I'd suggest to you that this thing, we still need information on. Again, leaving the meeting tonight, we saw some purposeful direction on these items that still need attention. That's the outline we would present you for consideration for the rest of the night tonight.
Maybe I missed, but the goal for us to go through these, is it to develop and, I'm going to switch, is it to answer these questions for the board so that we have a, can make an informed decision on the 26th? Or is it, because some of those, I was, you were talking about merging and things, I'm trying to think, is it to develop that Q and A document?
I believe it's going to be two-fold. I think, I hope, would, I don't know how you would separate those two things. If the board decides to go forward with this direction, the Q and A document is going to be the foundation. We're communicating to the public where the board's at.
That's just it, it's going to be the foundation, but when you're looking at, just in marketing and looking at those kind of things, you're not going to be able to have all of the questions in a document that people are going to read. They're not going to read, you know, so that's what I'm wondering, is if we're trying to look at and merge for the purposes of marketing and, or information, providing information in a written format?
If, I think if the board decides to proceed with a referendum, there's going to be plenty of work after that decision's made to develop materials.
Listen, first and foremost, this Q and A document from its origin was to hopefully help educate and inform you.
Okay, that helps.
But we're asking for your help to help one another, because again, some of you are in a different place. And so, but you're a good, I tell you, you're a good snapshot of the community that you represent as well, so I felt the best place to start in developing this is with you, to help you understand.
Is my goal tonight, because I like how you just put that, we all represent the people we're supposed to represent, and hopefully, your school board has every single representation there. By the end of this evening, should I be on board with what the board approves? Even if I have a question about the referendum, but if, if I have answers that bring it forward, that the majority of the board supports this, is my objective personally to be able to learn how to support that in the community? Because people often do shoot us emails, and we're trained to say, please direct it to so-and-so, you know, I don't have this. But is that part of my goal tonight, is to be a united front with whatever the decision is? And you're helping us with knowledge?
I would expect you to be a united front on the goal that the board approved. Just like any good team wants the quarterback makes the call, whether you agree with it or not, once you're at the line of scrimmage, you don't decide you want to do something else.
And you're talking about the 200 and 260.
That's the goal that's been approved.
You've taken.
Regarding a referendum, you haven't made that decision.
Right.
And just like our administrative team did a critical review of what was being advanced, this is your turn.
So Kate, this is more, I guess, I would have to say, to put you individually, more in a better place.
Yes.
And then, by January 26th, you as a board have to.
You as a member of the board, to just be a member of the board.
Yeah.
So the board makes a statement, and that statement that goes to the press, that goes to our citizens, they know we've all considered these things, we've thought of all the options, we've asked the questions, but we still say, no, I don't support this, or yes, I do support this. So that's kind of where I'm going, is this is going to help me do that, hopefully, for anybody that you run into at festival, or on the street, as they should, you know, they should feel like they should.
That's, again, as Jay said, that's probably the second part, it's twofold, that comes after you're able, as a board, to make a decision first on January 26th.
All right.
But you each individually will have that vote.
Without denying the reality that to get up to speed on all this will take time, if the board should approve a referendum, this is going to be part of your learning curve, so it's not so steep. So yes, Kate, you're here to ask questions, absorb, I know you've read through the materials already, but even people who deal with it on a day-to-day basis at an administrative level can't read it once and redeem it all. So if the board goes that direction, this would be the starting point for learning.
Good questions. Should we give it a try? We'll kind of get into the first one and see how it's going.
And so, Dr. Carlson has some materials for you that we're going to discuss, and what he's going to give you, in case you didn't bring it, and I think you only had it electronically, I might have printed it off, was a full Q and A, because you may be referring to that throughout the night, either in small group or large group activities. And the other thing we're going to pass out is the cumulative response that the board provided to the first of the questions that were presented. And so that question was identify what you believe are the three most important Q and As to communicate to the public. And let me just describe the layout of this document. So the question, the full question was at the top, and then feedback we received from the board is listed there. And I think, verbatim, unless administratively, when we reviewed it, we had some question or saw perhaps something that we thought was referenced in a different, wasn't, may have been referenced incorrectly. And part of the reason is, if you're on the facilities committee, you're on the finance committee, you revisited the technology committee, we had multiple drafts of this Q and A going on, and I think what some board members did was when the task was delivered to you on December 30th, you may have actually been looking at an earlier draft, and you may have referred to Q, and Q now became Z. And so as we were reviewing the input from the board members, in some cases, we thought, um, okay, this must have been from a different draft. So we've made some notes, we've captured your true intent, but the one that you see there, administrative interpretation, is this comment belongs to question HH. And there, we're referring to the actual one that we sent with the December 30th, and the one that would correspond to this document that you received tonight. Took us a little bit of time to work through interpretations, but I think we got it right there. So that's at the top, and then at the bottom, you'll see the Q and A item, and it's just a question, not the full answer, but you can cross-reference that to this, that the individuals were referring to. So for example, on this one, it says references, and it starts with D, F, I, L. Those were the items that board members said are most important for us to communicate to the public. Makes sense how that's laid out? Questions, the input itself captured at the top, the references is just an itemized list of which ones were most important. Makes sense?
So did all seven board members respond to these questions?
In, Dale, in one way, shape, or form, I think most.
There is some, some type of acknowledgement for most.
Some verbal, some in the written form.
It looks like there's only three answers to this question, and it's kind of distracting, because if this was our homework, we should have done. Mine was, though, just jumping in there, I didn't do a response in email, but Dale and I had a conversation. And so he, I'm sure he took notes from what I said.
And we did our best.
Yeah.
To us, it's kind of like the classroom, while you'd like to get it in written form, some of the students are really more interested in telling you.
So.
So we tried to, to us, the method of participating wasn't as important as participating.
So to that end, as Kate mentioned, I tell you, please, please, if you know that we did not put something down that you know should have been there, we need that.
I mean, I think, I mean, I don't want to say what you did, but I'm assuming when you were giving phone calls to me about this, I'm guessing you did that with others that maybe you hadn't heard from, so.
A little bit.
Each of us felt like we were reached out to, we had done that email thing.
Yes, sir.
I have a question, as I look at the sheet here, I just want to make sure I understand that this reference is kind of, so, work with me here, look at item L on this sheet. That would refer to L being the question, why do the referendum questions focus only on needs-related technology, facility, and maintenance? Is that correct?
Hopefully, that matches.
It does not match the document. It's, because that looks like question K.
Thank you, Tim. I can't tell you how many times we went through this today.
Question L would be how would the referendum dollar, referendum approved dollars be used?
I felt like I needed a decoder ring today, and apparently, it was not working correctly.
There's been a lot of moving parts.
I, yes, I haven't, I didn't have the right one.
Well, we could just verbally identify it as we go along, can't we? I just skimmed, it looked like the rest were good.
L's a bus, no, that's not.
It should be, that question is Kate.
L is a bus, but the question isn't.
We got the wrong question, but L was, it was L, we got the wrong question listed here. Is that what every, so if I look at L on here, the reference. Is that what every, so if I look at L on here, the reference question is incorrect. If you look at L in here, this is the correct question.
That's what I meant when I put L, yes.
Oh, thank you, Anita.
Yeah, I as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, on your sheet here, so as to not lose what was an error on our part, we'll just strike it, but then we're going to have to put in here, somebody tell me, what is L? How would the referendum approved dollars be used? Does what we did there make sense to everybody? Okay, yes. Awesome. Thank you. I don't suppose we get by with saying, we intentionally did that just to make sure you were...
Sure.
Tim was the only one awake.
Tim and Anita, Anita's usually got something.
I know, but you know, we have everybody else's responses.
So, all right, so going to, what's the activity we're supposed to do here? Ask the board members if they're comfortable to pick any one of the listed Q and As. Do I have that up there? There is, that's what we're going to be doing. Avoid duplication, you can say, yeah, I think that what Anita said was really interesting. And then briefly comment on why you believe that item deserves to be identified as most important. And again, not to say that something's unimportant, only to identify something most important. And this will acknowledge whether or not we got the right information in the Q and As, and help with future decision making. What the board says are important, please consider it. So, does that sound, you guys, so I don't know sure where you want to start, if you want to go in roll call order, or, people can pass.
Or just discuss, just open discussion.
Just give you some time to look, if you want to look at, but we'll kind of go down.
Well, I can get started pretty easy, because, you know, I already said three, and I won't use L, because I'll leak that for Anita.
That's all right, I'll share.
But I think the P, to me, that's really, it hits home. You boil it all down, what does it mean to the individual taxpayer? And I think that's important to know. You can't talk generality, surfing picture, people want to know, I think, in this day, how does it affect me? And so I think that is important to communicate, and, you know, making sure that we're clear and, you know, being as transparent. They want to know, if you don't tell it to them, they'll go, what are you hiding?
The full story of what the tax costs.
Yes.
I agree with that. I don't know how you can simplify the explanation anymore, I know you've done like a lot to already do that, but I think the general public, unless you're involved in the meeting conversations, like we are, I'm confused sometimes with some of the jargon, how do you put that?
Yeah, we talk about the elevator conversation.
Right.
That is, how do you, in the time from first floor to fourth floor, get the person to understand? Now, I believe some, the area of concerns or uncertainty, you'll see that very comment as one of the items that, how do you, and so, some work to do there. How do we boil that down to the elevator discussion?
We're talking here six year old.
So here's an example, though. What we're trying to do is, first, how do you, where are you at with this list, to help you make that decision? Even though it's a little bit framed in public, you know, what do you think's most important for the public, but it depends with you as you move forward with this process.
I think the number one question is D, that as a board member, anybody that I bump into as a citizen needs to know why I'm voting yes, if that's what I do, why I'm voting yes. And within that question, there is a bit of history, that we have done the best we can do over the course of the last many, many years, with way less money. And I can't remember which one of our legislators said, school board members are notorious for being able to do the best they can do under adverse circumstances, with less and less money every year, as we watch costs rise and rise. Some we can't control, our transportation costs, you know, that last question, why we, we do what we do, I have been very well versed on why we do what we do, it's the best thing for our district economically, so that's there. We've done all of that. So when I look at D, I want to make sure that Joe and Jill, who are looking at a referendum, know that there really is a good reason, we have to come back and ask for more money. And if we don't do it at this point, then you, Joe and Jill, have to decide what you don't want to have in our district anymore. And give me some input on that.
And it just talks about, I don't know if it's that one, but it talks about, we kept hoping that just around the corner, there'd be a solution. Yep, as a former treasurer on the school board, and Tim knows this as well, as former treasurer back here, he's been talking for years about the converging line. That is, how do you, with natural inflation and what's happened, how do you sustain?
Right. And so when we've talked before too about, is this referendum a new idea, it really isn't, because we have, we've done a good job projecting to see where emergency is going to come, and we finally have to go, you know, we really don't like to do this, but we're asking for some more money.
This year it's come for a long time, and you know that, I've mentioned it every year, converging lines for the last five or six years.
Yeah.
I have another comment, and it seems to me like D and F are the same question.
I kind of have that down too.
Why is the district coming from more operation money? This is why, this is why we need, need the money, because if we don't, this is going to happen. And you say, what's the downside of not getting, of not lowering the money? Well, if we don't, if we lower the cost, this is what's going to happen, that was kind of the same question.
And F kind of focuses on, we have done well with efficiency, that kind of supports D in the same way. Here's what we have done.
Yeah, I think there's a natural flow and connection between those two, if not combined, at least adjacent to one another, with E somewhere else, so that there's a natural flow, as people might look to. Thank you.
Well, F seemed like, are the answer would be?
Well, and I am going to steal L, and how will the money be used, because I do think that that, in my mind, that's the most important question. While we have a public that will consider the other things that impact on them, such as question B, I think what we have found historically is, if we make our case, if we are able to show that what we're going to use that money for is a good thing, and we make our case to the public, then the impact on their taxes and that is something they will measure. However, historically, they've been willing to say yes, we do support those initiatives. And so the fact, you know, that these are the three things we're looking at, are things that have been long time, studied, long time, indicated as a needs, unmet needs, those sorts of things, I think will help us make that case. And I think the public, I don't want to say buy into it, but I think they can acknowledge and understand those. They've seen districts, like La Crosse School District, have to go to big referendum because they, not too many years ago, they had put off a lot of maintenance and things, and so they were hearing about that two years ago, and they're seeing that, ooh, now Holman is talking a little bit about the same, but we don't want to go down that same road. And I think that says, you know, we're trying to be proactive versus reactive.
I pulled the same question with L as I did the other, with D and F, because L, L is kind of the same as D.
As P?
As D. Why is the district coming for more operation money? We're coming, we're coming to operation money because, because we need dollars for this, or we need dollars for that. Then you go to the next question, what would you use the referendum dollars for? Well, just answer to the D. I mean, you could, you could answer the...
See, now, I would go the other way, I would say the L first, and then the D, why? It's what you're doing, why? Why do you need that money?
I see him, I see him connect a little bit.
Connected, I suppose.
I'm taking that as a suggestion that administratively, we've done a pretty good job on this, because there should be a natural link between these things. The worst thing for a referendum, in my mind, would be to have disjointed thinking. What, this doesn't fit with your rationale for why you need the money and how you're going to use the money, there...
That's what I mean, it should be the same answer.
If you're going to throw stuff into that, you might also then want to look at I, who was involved in determining the needs. And the very first bullet talks about all the factions, and the very first word is community. Community, parent, and staff. So when you're looking at why we're finally getting to this point, it's we're listening, we have asked in the past what our community needs, what our parents need, what our staff wants, what our administration needs, we got that input, and the input is already there. It's not just your school board asking for this, or your administration today, it's based on things that we know. We go to our specialty people in busing and technology, and buildings and grounds, and whatever, and we also have gone to our community. And what we're asking for represents what we want, that they believe was a good quality. Yes, this is what we want.
It's more of the bottom up instead of top down.
It very much is, and I believe it's important, we're able to say then, if, and there will be, because it's a referendum, and it's, times are hard, and so people will not want to give any more than they can, but we're able to say, if somebody asks, well, why are you deciding to do this? We're able to say, well, it's based on these different components. I think there's power there.
Thank you for pointing it out, because I keep talking about the administrative role in doing this. That didn't mean a bunch of administrators locked themselves in a room with no input. This meant that we went back and said, if the board approves this goal that talks about generating more money, why have we been told? How will we serve our community? What has our community told us is important? And it was that foundation that developed this, not Dr. Carlson saying, oh, this.
I think that's a school board's job, is to support our administration, who are my F and L leaders, but it also is to support my community. And this common belief, and so that when I vote yes or no, I know that I'm voting yes for my school, and I'm also voting yes for my citizens. And I believe that that piece in number I aligns with a faithful vote.
I mean, these kind of needs have been identified, not only by the school board or administration, but by the strategic planning process that we did, and our committee work. You know, we had the facilities, buildings and grounds committee come to us and say, we need to increase the dollars, or this is going to happen, they've come a couple times and said that. And so, technology as well, we've approved a technology plan that we haven't provided the dollars to do, but yet we approved that plan. And so it's not, and we've got a technology committee that has been helping to, you know, provide that plan. And so it's not something that has just come of lately, this is something we've been hearing about for three years, and we want to show it.
So it's aligned with who we are, and what we've said is important in the past, by multiple stakeholders.
Right.
So while we didn't really rehearse and practice specific time limits on each piece, we probably are going to kind of encourage us to maybe move on, we can always come back depending on time that's left. What I flashed over here now is number two, if we're ready to, the question number two that the board was given, and Dr. Carlson will now distribute the board compiled input on question two. I'm going to shrink it down a little bit, if I get the, sort of put it all on one screen. No, I think I got it. So, all right, so somebody can do our proofing right away to make sure we got the right questions with the right letters here, that was very helpful last time. So, the activity with this one, suggested activity, could be small groups, but, let's see here, board members are given three dots, ask them to place a dot next to the uncertainty. Are we on uncertainties? Yes. That are greatest important to them. And then what we do is, we select the three that received the most votes, and ask board members to work through a large group or a small group, create a written record describing the nature of this uncertainty, what it is about this that makes, creates the uncertainty, and how to address that uncertainty. And so that'd be the idea. Now, I tell you, if we've done our work right, these are exact match to those. And so then there's this idea of dots.
Yeah, put all three on one.
Well, you know what, we talked about that, you can decide that.
Do the colors have significance?
We said you could. If someone believed one was really, really critical to the dress, put all three on one. Kind of burning your opportunity to say something else is important, but if that's how you feel. There's your, you guys can show it. There's nothing magic to the colors here? You just need three.
So we got to go put there on a board?
Yeah. No, you get three, there may be more than three on there, but only, please, only use three, you're on the honor system here. Just because you have four, Mr. Menninger, doesn't...
I can't, I can't use them all?
So you get what we're doing here, we're just trying to get some idea of which of these are most important, so that we can have some discussion here around those that are uncertainties you think need most attention. Look at the comments from your fellow board members, because those might be helpful to you in deciding which of these items we need to spend time on tonight. Remember, comments like they're your own. So whenever you're ready. You can work individually, small groups, however you're comfortable, talk to one another. Back or here, throughout. Yeah, identify three question and answers that leave you with uncertainty. Well, whatever you think uncertainty means, I suppose, gives you a concern. I would just say, your responses were a little different on uncertainty, and it ranged from, well, we took from, maybe you aren't quite understanding the question or the comment itself, or you're not certain of really the intent of it, so it just was a little different.
We can use more than one dot on one, right? That's your outside?
Yes, you, yes.
Stack the deck?
Yes, you may. Dot one up with all three, if you'd like.
Only three.
I can boot and listen. Keep going. Christina? I have this...
I turned my back.
I tried to give it a little way to Gary.
Even he wouldn't say it.
Because he stoops low.
Alex?
Maybe he'll take much.
Hey, Gary? Gary? Hey, Gary?
What?
I have a question.
Everybody down?
No.
Time to put some totals on here.
Oh, please, that's coming.
I'm cool.
Who went out and did her...
Have your hat. Have your hat.
See, Gary was...
Put on our head.
That doctor on TV, that was the first thing he said, cold. The first thing I saw was that. Oh, so look, we've remembered this guy, but he has cold as his acronym. And the second, I don't remember what the C was. Maybe it was cover up or something, but you should always have a hat on.
This one? It doesn't have to be this one. It should fit, though. It should fit.
Stretch it out.
Say, I've been asked to ask the group that when you speak, if you could maybe elevate your voice level a little bit because we're just trying to pick up the sound. So if you can do that. And then Christina, as we talk here, she's going to try to capture over there kind of the summary of the comments. Well, if we stuck to what we had talked about, we were going to pick three. R, if the referendum is not approved, no my school property taxes go down. G, why not meet the financial needs with improvement to the efficiency? And E, how frequently has the school district asked for operational tax increases? Now, these are not too far behind. And then, as you can see, while these are things that leave with uncertainty, the degree of importance or uncertainty is just not as great as those top three. So the idea was then ask the board members to work, large groups, small groups, whatever works, to create a written record describing what it is that is behind this uncertainty. And then, the most important thing, what are we going to do about that? How are we going to address this uncertainty that we have? And so Cheryl, I'll leave it to you whether you want to do that as a group as a whole. And call it upon the experts if they can help answer. Experts. Phone a friend. Call the expert if you need some assistance. And I think there may be multiple reasons why people have identified R. And you may benefit by having a little bit of discussion about, well, what did you mean when you selected R?
I think let's just do that as a large group and then we'll call on people.
You want to start with R? Let that proceed.
We'll start with R.
And ask people, why did you...
So those of you, I was thinking, oh, you wanted me to say why I picked R. I did. R was one of mine, too. But anybody want to...
Well, it seems like the assumption is...
Gary?
Information. Information weird.
I raised my hand. Go, board norms. Yeah, board norms. Put your head on there. I chose R because I thought that the question, the answer was not wordy in a manner that the general public could understand it clearly. I think that the answer could have been more succinct, but I don't know if that's what you meant by luck you with uncertainty. Is that what you meant?
That's how you interpreted it and that's why...
That's how I interpreted it. I knew what you meant. I knew what the answer meant, but I don't know that the general public is going to understand what the answer was.
How would they read it?
Well, read it. It's very wordy. It's very... With all due respect to Jay because he's very good at his job, but it's Jay's speech. It's financial speech. And I mean it in a nice way. It's very...
Thank you. I'll take it there.
I really do. It's very... I knew what you meant. Sorry.
No, no, no. Thank you. It's a challenging question, honestly, but I think one that needs to be asked and answered.
Yep. But you don't really say yes or no.
Huh?
Right. It's a yes or a no question.
I can't. Because the board has not yet made a decision. I can only base my response upon the past actions and intent of the school board. And board's past actions and intent have been to create a stable tax levy. They've never adopted a policy. They've never set a specific board goal or measurable target around that, but it has been an operating practice of this board for a long time. Don't give people drops and spikes in their taxes. But I can't make the statement that if this referendum passes or doesn't pass, what the board will do with the debt levy. You have used treasures, multiple of you sitting on the board now, have used a debt deficit strategy to effectively create a level tax impact for the people in this community. But you've never said that's a formal policy. If you took the action to say, regardless of what happens with this referendum, we want to ensure a level tax rate for debt, the answer to this question could be yes or no. You've not done that. I can't commit... I can't administratively commit to what you're going to do.
But perhaps what we could do is a... Not compromise, but as a follow-up, because I also believe, like Anita's saying, you as our numbers man have to put this information out there, even though of all narrative answers, this question has a black and white, and it's accounting numbers. And that for many is difficult. So with that said, could there be a follow-up narrative that said exactly what you just said? What I can... What... Not I. What we can do is tell you what we've done historically. And here's why. And it depends on what the board decides to do. You know what I mean? Those are things that we've done in the past. This is how many years we've done this debt deficiency strategy. And here's why we've done it.
So before we go to solutions, okay, let's hear from the rest of the board who picked that and why they picked that. So Gary, I know you were wanting to...
I don't want to know.
Shh.
Well, mine was the same reason, exactly what we were just talking about now was it depends. It depends on this or depends on that. It was kind of a question could be answered yes or no depending on time today.
And you want to know?
Because up to this point, everything we talked about on the board said if everything stays the same and we don't take any actions and we just let everything roll along as it is, yeah, your taxes will drop. But is that going to happen? Don't know.
Right. My recommendation professionally to you would be not let it drop because when the next building project comes, you're not going to want to have that junk associated with the next building project. And that's been the long-term strategy of the board.
And I had this question, and I agree with your comments. It is not clear. And I was the one who said, "Well, I don't like the answer because we don't know what that strategy will be." And I have long supported that debt deficiency strategy and community level tax. However, as someone on the Buildings and Grounds Committee, we've also seen those new buildings get pushed further and further and further out. And if we see those buildings that we were looking at 2016, now out into the 2020s and beyond, do we want to continue that debt deflation strategy for such a long period of time, knowing that that new building is not so soon on the horizon? Or should we look at this as an opportunity to help some of those taxpayers out there? And we have not had that discussion because our circumstances have changed from that rapidly growing district to seeing that grow slow. So that next building is not as soon on the horizon as what we had. And that may change the strategy. And as a board, we've never had that discussion.
And I'm not sure you can have that discussion and be certain because what if suddenly growth starts accelerating? And so the...
What's a power line that built growth?
Because there's so many variables in play regarding growth rate in the community that I don't know you can give an answer other than the board's acted fiscally, in a fiscally responsible manner in the past. You can trust them to continue to do that. And I will continue to try to provide the same type of guidance we've used for the last 23 years. But I don't know that you can give a yes or no answer to this.
Anybody else that hasn't spoken yet? I think for me, it... I think it is important question and maybe a little unclear only because we keep pushing the fact that if we pass this referendum, then we're going to do so in a way that's not going to increase your taxes. And so if we weren't be saying that, making that statement, we wouldn't be then saying, "Well, if that doesn't pass, then your taxes will go up." So it's so related to that. And for me, the most important thing isn't the impact on taxes. Don't get me wrong, it's important, but it's not the most. For me, it's student-driven. What's the impact on students' educational experience enrollment? Are we providing a safe transportation for them to get to and from school? Are we providing safe buildings for them? Are we keeping those up? We've made investment in the community. And then the technology investment in their educational experiences. So for me, that should be the number, what we're really talking about. Yes, we're going to do that with an impact on taxes, but we've always, as Jay said, we've always kept in mind to do it with the least negative impact. So that's not anything new, but I only think this becomes an issue because of the fact that we are promoting the fact that it won't have it, you know, it won't result in a tax increase.
I agree 100%. And when we developed this, we knew that there'd be multiple constituencies, some of you're thinking, Cheryl, and others, honestly, with quite the other flip importance. And so it became more complex because we incorporated the idea of the debt levy as well as the operational levy delivering a known net tax increase. And that complicated it, but sometimes to get all the things you want in life, it gets complicated. And it did. If you said, you know what, let the taxes go up because of this, this would be a lot simpler. I just don't think it would be as responsible to present to the public.
I'm just wondering if in the best of all worlds where you have those on the internet, where you have the short answer, and then if you want more information, read more kind of thing. You know, I don't want to necessarily pay a lot of attention to this because to me, that's not the most important thing.
We've talked about this. If this goes forward and if you start putting information onto a website as a 24/7 easily accessible, do you have like hyperlinks? And do you allow things to explode up? If this word... I don't connect with this word. I click on the word, "Oh, that, okay." You know, linking these things. That's exactly what Patrick Barlow mentioned at the last Finance Committee meeting. That exact same idea.
I've done... I've read surveys when I've been president of Wahi across the state, talking with different homeowners. Two of the primary things when people buy houses, A, clean water. People want water that's safe, a safe drinking water. And a close second is a school system that's quality, that they trust, that's a good steward of money. And they think... They don't want to have to deal with it. They've got enough problems in life. So I think people might pay a little... In my opinion, it's one thing to go toward a program that I think is reactive and not helping the community or not helping people. I mean, you can go on food stamps or any number of programs, but if it's a child who's helpless in many, many regards, I think people are more receptive to that.
So what's the... Anyone else want to speak to the why they chose this? Because A, if we have A, that was like unanimous that this was an uncertain... It's a board, so anybody else? Anything you want to add or visa?
Just kind of a little gibberish.
Okay. So then what's the next step, Jay?
I'm sorry.
The next step is to how do you address the uncertainty and the concern that the group has is it's not a yes or no? And I'm telling you, it can't be yes or no. So help me with, how do we address the uncertainties that the board has expressed?
Can we acknowledge it by just saying if this is something, without going to a hyperlink, saying, "We understand the question is out there. Is this a yes or no?" And we have a lot of empathy for that. And every year, I mean, whatever words you put it in, every year, the Finance Committee, the school board also says, "Is this a yes or no?" And when you acknowledge someone's question, it takes a bit of the... If there is accusation in the question, it takes some of the accusation away. As soon as you go, "Yep, you're right." We feel the same way. We understand.
And Kate, thank you. You came back to help me remember what you said earlier, to acknowledge a question, tell the story in a narrative way, and then talk about the measures the board goes through in considering this issue.
Yeah, and they're not unlike what our citizens will go through in their month. I mean, that's what I want them to see. Yep, we represent you. We're trying to do this for them.
Part of the vetting process on this, too, is to stop having school administrators and board members who know it read it and have John Q. Public read it and say, "What Alex said? This looks like some gibberish." And when you hear that, we need to hear that. If this is... Because the intent is to educate a public. If you choose to go down the path of referendum, you better be ready.
You want to mention the historical... You said historically, this is what happened. Is that going to continue? I'm not sure. But you should mention historically is what we're doing.
And I don't know. I read the first paragraph, but then you're getting into all those detailed numbers in the second paragraph. That's where I got lost.
Yeah. We'll compress that so that people only have to look at it if they want. So how is this conversation helping you as an individual with trying to move forward in your process with...
Well, it was funny because...
Because that's the most urgent portion of this.
When I first saw this question, my answer in my head went, "Yeah, it's going to go down. Why wouldn't it? It's going to go down anyway." So then I definitely started thinking about it, started talking about it. I said, "Wait a minute."
The debt defeescent strategy the board has used would not result... We would not reduce taxes. We would do some debt defeescent taxing for the future so that there wasn't this drop before the building. That's what we would do.
Isn't that the premise on which Sand Lake is being paid off early? Isn't Sand Lake being paid off early?
No. Sand Lake's on maturity versus big was not.
Can I just ask one more question? I want to make sure that if a citizen asks any of these questions, that just like we did right now, the answer we give them is exactly what they would do with their own home, with their own car. That yes, you know what? Thank you. We have that. We've done that every year to let them be assured we're thinking the same way.
You'll catch me using personal life analogies to try to describe school finance so many times. I'll tell you, sometime you'll get burned because how I think about operating doesn't include me stopping at payday USA. That's not me. But payday USA exists, and there are people in our community who are using it. So the risk I run sometimes with the analogies, I'm talking like Jay would do, and you know what? I'll tell you, sometime you'll get burned, because how I think about operating doesn't include me stopping at Payday USA. That's not me. But Payday USA exists, and there are people in our community who are using it. So the risk I run sometimes with the analogies, I'm talking like Jay would do, and you know what? That's not everybody. And so I caution, we need to be thinking about that, connecting with their personal lives, making school finance, oh, I get it, because that, but there's a risk always with that too.
Yeah, maybe that is stated eventually. I mean, not here by any means, but saying, every family has options. Some families are in emergency. Our district is not in emergency because we play well, and we're able to make better choices for a district. I don't know.
If you don't answer this question, Pete, if you don't answer that question correctly, the taxpayer could, in their mind, he'd say, "If I vote, if I vote for the referendum, my taxes are going to stay the same. And if I don't vote for it, my taxes are going to go down."
That's why you have to have the question there.
And how you answer it can be kind of, it doesn't make any difference, why would you pass a referendum?
I think we need to move on. So...
That would mean G.
Why not meet the financial needs with an improvement?
You can look at that question and answer it. It feels right.
Or I see that. Yes. I think, I think that question, we've talked about before, not only efficiencies, but cuts and other, I thought maybe it should be like cuts, not only improving the efficiency, but reductions in costs in general, which doesn't mean just efficiencies, which mean resources.
You hear what Gary's doing? He's saying, "It's not just about efficiencies, the other way to do this is to reduce programs." And that we addressed, and a different question is, what happens if we reduce spending? So we split the two apart, but Gary's pointing out the natural connection link in people's thinking between those two. One, right, efficiency or simply reducing spending. That's not efficiency, that's just reducing spending.
Well, you can go on, improve efficiencies, go on to the referendums, no less cost more money to implement the efficiency changes. It would save...
I don't know if I'm, if this makes any sense. I don't agree with the first part of the answer, I guess I shouldn't say it on the third, but I don't get why it's there. I think emphasis should be in the middle, the last section, where it says, you know, 79% and 71%. Should be emphasis on those, and not this up here, rates near both the state and regional averages. That doesn't really say anything to me, you know, near the average, you know, than what C's score. So the first part, I would be fine, or would agree with taxing. And just starting it with the school board administration staff looked the most effective way to do business.
Question?
Oh.
What question we have again?
G. G. So, yeah, I think what, even though we're near average, it doesn't necessarily the average of efficiency.
No, it doesn't. Because we could be doing a lot more with average-level spending than someone else.
And when I start reading that, I lose a lot of interest. I'm sorry, we went over shopping parts of the essays in AP Lit today. But the central part, that's interesting, and those are numbers, those are tangible, you know, that's comparing the region. The first part, you know, doesn't, just makes me want to stop reading. I don't know.
Yeah. I get it.
I want to squash the...
This needs to go through more. Alex, don't feel bad about any question you'll ask, because if this gets approved and I get in public forums, you're dishin' all baby food right now. Because some people have real concerns, so this is good.
Any others on why you chose that one? G. Then move on to...
E, I believe.
E?
Four.
Oh, frequently have just school district asked for operation, operational taxing.
That was my three points.
He was really excited about it.
Yeah.
I saw him put two and the third.
On top, you have...
Well, history is always a good indication of success. I've always made that comment. So how many times have they asked for money?
Once.
I mean, I don't know. I'm new to this whole game.
When did we lose the ability to just raise the taxes by ourselves?
Revenue limits were 1993 or 94.
So it's safe to assume we've only done a referendum once?
Oh, no.
No. I mean, it says...
Operational tax. Operational cost.
Yeah, there's a difference here, and this response attempts to get at both. Because the question about how often have we gone to referendum is twofold. One is referendum to build schools, to address the enrollment increases we've experienced. The second is referendum to operate those schools that we built, because just like putting an addition on the house, there's going to be additional electric, and there's going to be maintenance, and there's going to be, so that's a second type. And then there's a third type, which is truly operational, to cover new costs, not related to a building, but new cost of operating. And the third one, we've had one. And that was back in 1998, and it had to do with technology. All the other referendum we've had have been to construct facilities and then to operate the new facilities that we constructed. Test John, correct?
Absolutely.
So the answer is multiple. You could say we've only had one for true new operational cost. You could say we've had multiple related to operational cost. Or you could say we've had multiple related to operational cost and construction. The reason I included them all was because some people might be asking this question to find out, how many times have you asked us for more money in the form of a referendum? Which includes all. How many times have you asked us for true new cost-supporting effort? Once.
So for, when you build a school, that's when you need more money, basically, right?
We bond for the construction of the school.
And again, what Jay said, there's typically had been an operational piece to that, linked to building a new school, to help run it.
And you have to ask for referendum because you just can't get a tax base to do it, right?
That's what's happening this time, and that's what happened in 1998 when they did technology. These are the only two times those have been advanced. But again, I'm trying to put my kevlar on, because when I get out in the public, and if I say only twice, then somebody's going to say, "Uh-huh." See, they're trying to dupe you. I can give you a list of all the referendum questions, and times they come and ask me for more tax money.
Depending what kind of referendum you're talking about.
That's exactly right.
Standalone?
And...
Building with operational or...
And unless you reveal it all upfront, then you will be discredited, and I will be discredited for not being transparent. Been through enough referendum to know that that is likely to happen. I'm trying to protect you if this is what you do.
So if we control a question, would we want to change the question?
How many operational for new cost referendum we have?
And you've got, you've vetted a thousand referendums?
We have had one failed building referendum and the associated operational cost.
And why?
Well, that's as many people as voted on it. I can't answer that. I can tell you that it was a construction project for an intermediate-level school, where we would take the sixth graders out of the middle school and out, I can't remember, it was fourth and fifth, out of the elementary and create an intermediate instructional delivery that would have created facility capacity at the middle and high school, or elementary school. That's the one that failed.
It's a, don't think they understood it real well. They're pretty convoluted.
Well, there's multiple.
That's part of the battle, isn't it? It's communication, I'm forgetting all of them.
Communication is important, as important is identifying truly what the community believes in. And then communication becomes much easier, because if you're really connecting with what they believe in...
So I think you need to change the question. Because the question as it reads only the last part, that's, you know, that's the question, that's the answer in the last part, the last referendum presented to the public versus that one, that's answering the question as it reads now. I think if you want to get, you know, all the cats out of the barrel, you should rewrite the question.
Yeah. I get it. Focus, and if there's two questions, or if there's only one, but have one focusing specific on operational for additional...
And then one about just referendum.
Facilities related, and the operational cost of facilities.
And then keep it very, very simple, I would say. There's a lot of words, and it kind of sounds like we're hiding something. So if it's very, very cut and dry, then, you know...
We'll need to, this goes through that vetting, Alex, again, where John Q. Public having some people like that read it, because you got to, there's a fine line here about failure to disclose, because then some will say you're not being transparent. But yet putting it in a concise enough way, an everyday language way, where people will connect with it, it's a difficult, but an important part of a referendum, if we go down that path.
Anything else anyone wants to add to that? So that was the top three. Any others that people want to pull out, or we've got a couple that have read?
And remember, this is, at this point in time, really designed to most help the board decide what to do. Thank you very much. You're also, in the dialogue, you're helping yourself decide what to do. And you're also giving us some input, but this won't be the last chance to address these things. If the board does on the 26th approve a referendum, we'll be back at this. Why is this not clear? Why am I left with uncertainty? And how can we better capture that?
I mean, the education environment is anything but stable. It's constantly changing. New laws are coming out. It's constantly changing. And I think the schools have to be as proactive, I always throw that word out there, as possible. So, and I, my question was a history question, basically, because I'm still in a deep learning curve, and I'm never going to get out of it, so... And I just want to be struck with the process, you know what I'm saying? Uh-huh.
We're all in our own deep curve. It's nice this year.
I was probably going to keep moving.
Yep, okay.
All right. We're dead here. Do you know what's going to type? Are you typing anything on? Yeah. Thank you.
I think that curve is a free fall.
Jan, do I turn this back on? Does it go to sleep?
Maybe.
The next section should be a little shorter.
Well, we don't need to check out who's going to work like that.
I think you've got, coming around, the responses from the board on question number three. And question number three was, identify any Q and A items you believe are not relevant enough to be included in the Q and A document. You want to try, Jan? I'm going to just try powering it up again.
There's a note.
It's... 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 It's...
There, you're just going to keep acting. It rests.
Rest is a good thing.
Rest. No, you're getting tired, you're getting tired.
This one might go a little bit more quickly.
So what would you go to?
Well, okay, so break up the non-relevant Q and As into small groups. Well, there's three of them. And if you read them, I don't know that there's even three, the activity then was intended to be, identify whether the non-relevant items should be deleted, modified, merged, or otherwise addressed.
It doesn't appear that we felt there were.
Wow.
More the better, right?
Some may be a bit complex and oversated, and maybe rearranging, but in terms of relevance, all relevant, just find a way to, somewhere downstream, make it digestible.
Yeah. We move on to number four.
This next one's not quite so easy, I don't think. So, Christine, I was trying to get the PowerPoint back up that would describe what the activity is. And... So you got the board feedback on, or input on item four? So activity here is, board reached consensus on how each important piece of information will be addressed by January 12th board meeting. Because if these are important pieces of information board members need and have not yet received to make a decision on how to proceed, we need to decide who's going to do it, what it's going to be. And on this one, if they get signed to administration, which I think most of them will be, you're going to have to give us a chance tonight to ask some clarifying questions, so that we are responding the way you need information. And as you can see, one of them is kind of long. We made every effort to, through our own interpretation of that and consolidate it to a simple point, we felt like we were being unfaithful to the person who submitted it, because we didn't, we didn't want to lose the intent by putting our own interpretation on it. So we're going to have to go through each of these, item by item, and you're going to have to, as a board, tell us what you expect us to do prior to the January 12th meeting. Fair enough. So Cheryl, you can decide, you want to give everybody a chance to read through all of them, you want to just start right at the top and start plugging away?
Should we go item by item and just start plugging away? So the first one, honestly, don't need more information before moving to advance a referendum. We're all aware, or should be, that this has been talked about at the board level for a couple of years now. I don't know if I need to read all this. I'm anxious to get going, get a committee together, get to work for our students and our community.
So our interpretation here was that there wasn't really necessarily a task to do here for follow-up, but we just wanted to at least put it down. But this was, oh, did you not get one?
Nope.
There we go. So whatever conversation we moved, we did not see a follow-up task, other than like committee, but we really thought that was, boy, we haven't even, the board hasn't even taken action on moving forward yet, so...
I was just saying, good job. I was right. So then, the second bullet is, we'd like the following items to be part of the discussion. And this is good, not only because of our work that we've done with Matthew Fail, when we've talked about data that will be helpful in driving decision-making kind of thing. So I think this is a good, this exercise, I mean, not just this bullet point, but this exercise is a good part of the questions we should be asking ourselves as we are looking for data. So, again, the second bullet is, we'd like the following items to be part of the discussion. What was the total cost impact of the decision in 2014 on raising the amount in the cost of health insurance? What was the total cost impact on the board decision in 2014 in reducing class size? What's the total increase in number of employees working for the school district? Head count, not FTE, what percentage is this? What's the estimated cost impact of this? And what is the total increase of employees budgeted for 2015? What percentage is this? So these are questions a board member has, and so...
And I would just say first, too, that some of these, including these four possible, might end up being additional questions that you may even want for the Q and A, too. So, but, but right now, we're going to look for direction specifically, and on some of these, I have some clarifying questions, but...
So work for the administration to do related to these four items.
And we're ready to, although, as Dale said, we need to ask some clarifying questions so we make sure we're properly interpreting these. So for number one, can I ask some clarifying?
Why don't you?
And I'll speak to these, because I wrote all four.
And I'll speak to these because I wrote all four of them, so.
All right. I will direct my questions to you.
I'm not, I'm not ashamed.
No, good questions.
So I believe that number one is specifically referring to the district changing its contribution rate for health insurance from 80% of the premium to 85% of the premium.
Yeah, roughly a cost of $276,824. I have the number. I just thought it's good to have part as we talk about, you know, we, we say how important all of these things are, but we never had this discussion as an alternative when we were discussing that. And to me, it's if we're saying we've been wise and good custodians, then how we've spent that money needs to be part of the discussion to validate that to the public.
So in addition to just the dollar amount, which may be just a dollar amount, it doesn't say why. Would you like, would it be appropriate for administration to go back and say, what was the rationale that accompanied that?
Absolutely.
Like us to draft something?
Just one of those informational things we had discussion with.
Yeah. Are we, I mean, it seems like we're bringing up a lot of, you know. So what's your question, Gary? I'll let Gary answer.
Yes. We stop, stop the process we're doing now to take the time and do, do diligence of these if the board feels it's important enough to do it to use as resources or if the board feels it's not important enough to use as resources.
So one of, so at the la, when we met with Matthew Fail, a part of the results of that is a process to determine as we ask for data and information, that we would go through a list of questions to identify how important that is to the board as a whole. And is it, is it data that already exists? And Tim's identified that, yeah, the data already exists. The justification, I think I remember what you used as the justification when you presented that. So it exists, but it would be something you'd have to pull, pull together.
This is not creating new data. I believe what Tim's referring to is existing data. We just have to go back, pull out and repackage maybe by stating it in the form of a Q and A.
But then the other question, right. But the other question is, is this important, is this an important question to the majority of the board in order to make this decision?
Well, to bring you up as a point of discussion, so the purpose of discussion, talk about what we've spent, to consider whether or not we want to spend more. I mean, I'm turning to the bottom line here.
No, I, I want to just answer a couple of questions. Number one, I would be very careful about establishing a policy that allows the majority to determine what is and isn't important because then we become what we don't want to be. And all I have to do to thwart that is go to an open records request. So be careful because as soon as we say the majority determines what's important, what have we become? We've become mess.
Well, Tim, I think it's in the context.
And I know you hate it when we say that, but that's what you're doing.
It's in the context of the time of the administration too. We've been hearing, and we've been hearing from administration that when we make data requests, it's taking more and more of their time to pull that because we don't have anyone in charge of that primarily. So in, and I wish you would have been able to attend that workshop because as we discussed that, in that workshop, we talked about all of those things, that as a board, we are a board and we do, one of our norms is that we will respect decisions that have already been made. And I think that's what people are getting to here is this is a decision that's been made, so it, why is, you know, why is that reflective of a decision we're going to make in the future, I think is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, because I, I think where Tim's going, at least my interpretation where Tim is going, you're gonna be asked this question. You're gonna be asked, why has the board made decisions in the past related to how it's using money rather than setting those monies aside to address this issue? And I need to, administratively, and I think you each, are going to need to be prepared to answer that question. And so not just the dollar amount, but why did you do it so that people at least understand? Yet, to me, it goes to transparency.
So where does that stop? Where does that end? Because we've made a lot of decisions. We've set aside $100,000 for maintenance, for transportation, for technology, for co-curriculars. So all of those decisions are past decisions.
Fair enough.
So in bulk, it's that efficiency question, if you put them all together. Kate?
We see a difference in a couple of things here, Tim. Not that any of those questions are a problem for me. The questions that are bulleted are black and white questions. How much was spent? The question that you brought forth tonight is a new question, which is, and what was the rationale? I find that that is a bit problematic only because every vote I have taken should be questioned with what the rationale was. And I had input, my administration came to me and said, here's what we've decided, here's what we're recommending. Very few times have we not supported what our administration comes to us. So there's, there's that rationale question, but over, and I'm a newbie like Tom in learning curves, for three years, I've been making votes twice a month. And my rationale, I feel really good about, but as soon as I bring those four items up for rationale, what's to discourage every single vote I've made in this district, every single vote that we've made? So I'm just gonna put that out there, that these particular issues to me in terms of why I voted yes or no on this are no more important than why I voted yes on no on any budgetary issue. So why not list them all? There's just a question, I guess, I have for you.
Well, I'll explain the question and then I will absolutely be done talking tonight because I'm gonna have to take my case to the public because I see I'm not gonna be able to take my case to the board. That being said, the rationale is that, do you want a talking point to say why the board did that? Or do you want me giving my opinion why I think the board did that?
What do you mean by that, Tim?
Because I don't agree with this. I don't agree with some of these and I voted no on them. So if we go out to the public and you say you have to support it as a board member, but you don't want me to understand the rationale?
But you were given the rationale.
I guess what I'm gonna ask you though, that's maybe not tonight.
Okay, sorry.
We will take this to the public for a vote and I will express my opinion to the public and we'll.
Tim, you were given the rationale at the time of the vote and one of the norms of the board.
I really don't want the rationale. I really don't. Dr. Carlson mentioned it, I said, fine. I really could give two hoots about the rationale. I think it's wrong.
So you ask these questions to do what? I don't understand the purpose then. If you know the answer to these questions, then what?
The purpose is a.
What's the bottom line?
The bottom line is, I agree with the fact that we need technology. I agree with that. The bottom line is, I agree we need to increase in these buildings. I agree with that. I agree with all of that 110%. I also agree that we should not cut anything. The scare tactics about cutting, cutting, cutting are scare tactics. But I don't agree we need to expand. And we expanded health insurance last year. We expanded FTE count. We expanded this way beyond the growth of our class size. And then we say, geez, we need this because it's important. It is. It's extremely important, but we have to own our decisions. And if we believe that was the right thing and we believe that that was the right thing to do, then we should be able to go to the public and say, this was the right decision. We're still out of money and please give me more so I can support this. But if we don't believe those are the right decisions and we shouldn't try and hide them, we shouldn't try and mask them, we should say, this is what we did, this is how we spent your money, this is how we did it, and we want you to support that and continue to support us as we go forward. Because I don't believe it's a choice between this and that. And I don't think it's a choice between cutting things. But we always go to polar extremes instead of trying to find a middle ground. And what we had here is an opportunity for middle ground to say, we're not gonna cut everything. We're not gonna cut teachers, we're not gonna cut sports, we're not gonna cut anything. But we don't have the money to expand and at the same time, do all these other important things. That's the point. That's the just of the matter. And what we want to turn this into a debate is, oh, do you believe in the kids or not? No, it isn't that. Do you believe in our buildings need work or not? No, it isn't that. It's a belief that we can accommodate all goals and find a middle ground. That's what it's about. And we fail to see that when we're on a polar end of an issue.
But I guess I would say, the only thing I would offer is that these are decisions that have been made.
Absolutely.
And I would say the majority of the board is not running from these decisions. We support these decisions, but I personally am having difficulty understanding how they tie in with the decision to go to referendum because they are decisions that were made at the, at a date, certain time. This is a different certain date and time and.
Because I think we'll see that these decisions that we made in 2014 to expand, not to hold anything, not to cut anything, could have potentially paid for all of these things. And unfortunately, we should have had this discussion then instead of saying, oh, can we do this? Or, boy, we have this out there that's really important. We chose to separate those debates. But they're intertwined.
I believe these questions will be asked whether Tim asks them tonight or somebody asks them at a referendum forum.
I agree.
And they'll ask for the rationale. My belief is you better be just ready for those and just give the straightforward answer why the board did this. They will be asked. I think Tim's just representing constituency.
Do we know what the answer to number two is? We already decided, we know what the justification, the number one is and what the number is. What about number two? Is that something we know? The impact, the total cost?
Well, part of my clarification on that is specific to the K3.
Yes.
Change in class size decision. Wait, I can, that, that won't take much. I can.
And on this, we're talking specifically the one-year cost, that year.
Yep. In the next question, the rationale behind it is if our class, if our pupil is growing at 1.6%, but our staff is growing at 8%, we already have a very excellent teacher-student or pupil ratio or in EA to pupil ratio, we have an excellent. So we should not be seen, or if we do, why is it? We'll have to explain it. Why is our, our staffing numbers increasing at a greater rate than the students? Because people are gonna want to know that and we have to be able to explain that.
Give us a shot at the first question and if there's, like I did, you know, there's, I'm then trying to answer the next question that comes. Let us start with the first question. And I think what we're saying is the K3 decision, 2014, and teachers. And total cost, so that'd be the wages and benefits related to those positions.
And we had that numbers in our meetings. I mean, I could go back.
I think most, by and large, that's what's, it's gonna be.
It's all in the meeting notes when we approved all that.
Can I ask a question then, just from my perspective? I feel like a lot of the focus has consistently been with you for nearly years, is there's a lot of scrutiny when it comes to staff, staffing, teachers in particular. And I, and I get it.
It's 80% of our budget, so there's gonna be.
I totally get it, you know, but I also think there's a lot of cost that goes in the background and all those other kinds of material and the things. And I'm just curious as to, how come that is such the focus for you?
Because it's 80% of our budget. It's the majority of it. So, I mean, to, it's no different than work. If I want to adjust a budget, if I want to, if I want to try and make my budget work, do I look at posted notes that cost me five cents? Or do I look at my biggest line item for budget? It's just simple budgeting, you know, it's, you know, that's really what it is.
And I get that.
And that's why, it's nothing more than that.
I get that, but I guess the problem is the people that teach our kids, that's kind of based on their goal, which is.
It is, absolutely.
To achieve and learning.
I do not.
And that's where you should be heavily spent on your budget because that's your investment.
I absolutely agree with that.
You know, but I, I've not heard one other thought from you about ways to conserve money if that's really what it is, about dollars and cents, and that's the most important thing. There's been no other idea, thought, or perception that I've ever heard about, what else can we look at as far as spending, you know, co-curricular activities or something else? But it's always coming back to the most important resource that we have, the direct connection among our kids and the human contact part of it with our kids and not even looking at individual needs of what the stu, it's not just a student per, student per teacher ratio. I mean, there's so many factors that go involved in making those decisions.
I think if you look at the record, I've never once advocated a cot ten of that. I, I voted for this class size reduction and I supported that. And I voted for that.
I know that in discussions, and I'm a newbie, I am with this, I know that, you know, some of those discussions, we talked about how we are just, expenses and revenues are here and they're not, we're not making any headway to some degree. And I know that's not everything in the world, but it is something because this is a business to some degree. So I just, as a business person, I can see the value of not minimizing our assets by any means, but just looking long-term on where we're going. We, I just, it would be a real shame if for some reason, some, for example, some other voucher school came in here and took the third of the students away. Then what would you do? I mean, then what are you gonna do? I mean, I'm just, it's not gonna happen, I know, but we gotta be proactive and we just have to look at things, harder decisions. I didn't vote for the, I voted no with the, with the healthcare thing too. I didn't think it was, in my opinion, I agree with Lisa totally, but I, we want an environment that I think where we empower the teachers possibly, or all the staff with making decisions on what is there. Maybe hold our healthcare costs down. I'm 51 years old, I don't need, you know, child, I don't need chiropractor, I don't need dental or orthodontics anymore. Maybe I can get a program where I can save some money there and, I don't know, I just, I think if we empower the staff more, take that sort of a route as opposed to a holistic health plan, I think that would be better. I think we could save money and we could come back into bonuses and technology and things that make the school system better.
Well, and I, I just want to say that one of the things we learned with Matthew was one point of questioning old decisions that were made, that we've agreed as a board that we are going to, whether we're on the majority or the minority of decisions that have been made, we're going to support those publicly and as a board. So it's one thing to ask these questions for the purpose of saying, these are questions that are going to be asked by the public, so we need to be prepared and we need to have the justification out there and be prepared for those. It's another thing to, to maybe do that and, I don't know, Tim, I'll tell you, my reaction was that you were asking these questions for the purpose of impeding progress on, on the referendum for a negative reason, because you didn't support some of these decisions. You did some of them, but not all. And so I think maybe that's it in, in the delivery or whatever of how those questions are. For me, I can totally swallow, okay, let's have, what was the cost? What was the administrative justification? Doing it in that kind of context, but, you know, I think we've agreed that we're not gonna go back and continually visit old decisions that we didn't agree on in, as a negative, you know, in a negative form or purpose. So I think that's.
And I don't think we do, but if I go, if my kid comes to me and says, I made a decision on how I spend my money and now I need more, I tell them, you made choices on how to spend your money. You know, now obviously, will I let them live in the street because of the choices they made? No. Does that mean I don't care about my children? No. But in order to teach them proper budgeting, they have to live within their means. That is not an unlimited resource to come to every time they've spent more money than they have. So they have to live with the choices that they make. Now, I will not let them sleep in the gutter because of their choices, but I'm certainly not gonna give them access.
Well, then the public would dispute the referendum. I don't see what the issue is. You put it before them and say, I spent our money, if you put it that way, I spent my money, I need more money to support what I want to do. Can I have it or not? They say yes or they say no.
But the issue is too, we also have money taken from us.
Quite honestly, this public member does not support the referendum.
Are these points going to be presented to the public? Are these points going to be presented to the public? Are these points going to be presented to the public, or are we just coming up?
It's a hint, it's a hint to the man's ass.
So, these are, and that's maybe more to what Dale was wondering, is what do we need to do before taking action? And I think what I'm hearing is that the board, there is an interest in some of the board in hearing the answers to these, but it isn't necessarily something we're going to be putting out and promoting in the brochures or whatever. But this is more of a question that the board members are...
And I wouldn't say we should put that on a brochure, actually.
No, I'm...
A brochure.
Okay.
Kate?
Okay.
Very briefly, you have just said you did not support the referendum, and thank you for finally just saying.
Yeah.
Six of us do. And we're going to go forward, and we're going to ask for a referendum. The questions you have brought up, I will be ready to answer, and I will be ready to tell my citizens why I voted, and why that vote was a good vote, and why my administration... But I thank you for finally just coming forward and saying, "Hey, I'm not going to support it." It's like the elephant in the room. So, once that's out there, okay, then I'll be prepared for that.
I haven't...
Because there's a lot, well, no, you just said it. And there's a lot of citizens who probably won't support it either. So, okay, I'm ready for that, Tim. I'm ready for it.
I, my comments, I just want it to be as rugged as possible. I mean, we have to be on top of things, and we have to show we're good stewards. And I do think we, I haven't met anybody in the school system that I don't think doesn't believe 100%, 110% what they're doing. But, I mean, we just have to be, I just, I'll leave it at that.
So, if I could correct three, it is, it was teachers or all employees?
Total increase number of employees.
Okay.
Should just be an FTE count. Melissa should have that during the...
Should be FTE?
No, not FTE, head count, just how many?
I got to ask some clarifying questions.
Do we have 1,020 versus...
Okay.
I don't know. The data is important.
So, it's regular part full-time, but you wouldn't include substitutes? They are on the payroll.
If you would like for the benefit of the group, because I know it's getting late, I'd be happy to take this with you one off, because the group is apparently not interested.
Really?
So...
Dr. Carlson, I'm going to ask, because a couple of board members are asking me, going back to the meetings with Tim, or with Matt. So, if the, you know, we did, and Tim, it's, it was something that I think we as a board agreed to, is, right, but we as a board agreed to that data requests against, so one of the questions is, how difficult is this question? Does it exist? That kind of thing. If it does exist, then that's one thing. And we decided, then it's, you know, okay, but we're really looking at data that's going to take, me and Jay Clark is going to have to stop what he's doing and spend two weeks or eight hours, or whatever it is, to be able to draw that data. Or Jan Lee or anyone is going to have to take time to draw that data. And that, in that case, if it was going to be a lengthy change of schedule kind of thing, that it would be something the board would discuss and have to agree upon to draw that data or not. And I know what you're saying, Tim. You can just do it as a, as a open request, open records request, but in the spirit of working together as the board.
If any of, if any of this data is difficult to retrieve, then we have some systematic issues.
What means by saying sure?
Because we should know how many employees are working at the school district on 1114, and how many are working on 1231. That should not be hard data. I have not asked for anything.
I'm not necessarily, I'm just saying, if it would be difficult to retrieve, then...
And because the majority appears to have a different opinion than the minority, the majority is trying to thwart the minority's access to information.
I think the issue is that Tim doesn't agree with the referendum, and he wants the data to support why we shouldn't move forward with the referendum, correct? That we've spent our money, it was a bad decision, and now we need...
I support it, so I'm not saying it's a bad decision. I say we have to own the decision. We have to own the decision.
You said you didn't support the referendum.
I don't support the referendum.
Right, right.
And I'm not saying I didn't support how this was spent either. I'm not saying that that was a bad decision.
But how is this... So, going back to the questions from the, I don't have the form in front of me, but is this difficult information, or is this data already exist?
Are we talking about number three?
Yes.
If I have some clarifying questions, can we...
It's just very simply, how many employees were working here on 1114, and how many were working on 123114?
Let me just illustrate.
Okay, so just 2,014.
Do you want, you gave the dates.
Yep.
That's helpful.
Yep.
And do you want substitute employees included in that?
Substitute?
Yes.
If they're, I mean, if they were replacing a full-time...
No, I'm just talking about, thank you for the clarification. Do you want co-curricular positions reported?
Nope.
Thank you for the clarification. So, these are the kinds of things that I would need to know to determine what's the workload associated with this. Makes sense?
It's how many distinct people are working.
Got you.
You do two jobs.
And I think you're talking about regular, full and regular part-time positions.
Yep.
That is correct.
It's not hard data.
That is not overly cumbersome data to collate.
But I do think it's important, and what's concerning is the people in their effort to advance their position want to pour information. And what's important to the public is to show that we're good custodians, and are we spending frivolously, or are we not? And if we're not spending frivolously, then we should be able to validate that.
I just have to say something. Could I, so...
I'm not saying we are...
So, who are the people in an effort to, who's thwarting information?
I'm being told I can't ask these questions.
Tim, you're, we're asking you to follow the path that has been set forward by Matthew Phail, who we've hired as a consultant to have our board work together, and you don't bother to come to the workshop, so you need to know.
That is, that is such an illegal process.
What? To come to a workshop where everybody else is expected to go and take off time from their families and their jobs and their lives and make a priority to work together as a team? I mean...
Did that just follow our norms?
It's not an illegal process, Tim.
I don't go to, I'm not, really.
It's putting all the...
Really, I will continue to say prayers. It's a shame that what we have here is a situation where we hired a consultant to tell us what we want, that says the majority has the ability to control everything.
Tim, you're saying that you can't...
Including what the minority can ask. I can't railroad that one. Who's being railroaded? I'm being told I can't ask this information.
No, you're not following the rules that we all agreed on, the majority of the board agreed.
Come and get over everything.
So, so if the majority makes rules that are unreasonable, should the minority have to follow them? You followed what's going on in Madison. Should the minority have to follow all the rules because they make those rules in Madison? Should they? Should they just fall in line and say, "Absolutely, that's the way it is. Good for you, we appreciate it, thank you very much"? No, you have ability to disagree.
Unfortunately, until they're elected in the majority.
I think we're getting off track.
But there's the ability to disagree.
That's true.
I think so too. And so, let's, the conversation has gotten off track.
Yes.
And I think let's go back to these questions and...
And it is very unfortunate that we have become a very partisan body.
We will continue to have discussions, so, Tim, please, if we can just move on. So, the number, the increase, the number of employees that budgeted for 2015, is that a number that is difficult, or is it already, okay? What is the total increase in number of, I'm sorry, what I need to know to proceed is nothing. Okay. The $1 today versus $4 tomorrow makes sense as long as we have a strong valid reference source. So, is there anything you need on that?
No, in fact, I'm reaching out right now to some of the sources that we've used to get that, to get some validation, so, under the process of that.
I think the questions, answers are sound and more reactive in nature. I think taxpayers would be more open to the referendum if the district provided talking points and goals along with the needs. I would not say the talking points are reality, they are wishes and dreams because school district dreams big. How is technology going to help empower students and make them more responsive to both for their own success? The promotion helps students prep for realities of college and work life.
And this is all under one bullet?
Bullet, yeah.
But I think breaking it up, I don't know, maybe breaking it up into paragraphs might be a good, there's a lot of content there.
Yep. So, is this, someone's ringing. So, talking points and goals along with the needs, I think those would be something one day that we would come up with if we pass and decide to do a referendum, correct? Or is there some interest in having those before we make the decision?
It seems to me that this is something that the educators would be, would be a good idea, they would, I just, I'm not, this is my question, and I think that the people in the field are the ones that have the great ideas. I know I've talked with teachers who've rewrote classes because students don't pass. And they just say, "Well, I'm just going to rewrite it myself, and we'll make it work." So, I just think that there's a lot of potential, good information that we could, we could share with the general public. But I, again, Jill, I don't have the background in it.
So, in order to help you make your decision, do you feel that talking points and the goals, the needs, you've got enough information on that, or do you need more information in that area?
I think the general public would need more information.
Okay, but for you, you're okay, okay. So, then moving on, how is technology going to help empower students, make them more responsive, responsible for their own success? The promotion helps students prep for the realities of college work life? Again, do you think this is something that public is, needs, or is this something you need, information that you may need in order to help you make your decision? I think, isn't that, Dale, what you're looking for?
It's something that I, again, I've seen this in action.
Okay.
In the public school system with the communication system with the teachers or with the parents, and it basically says, "Students, you need to, you know, this is what's going to happen to you next year when you start a platform or GW Madison, you need to..." I just think that if we had, I don't know, some ways to, I'm not saying it's something I do next month or anything, but it's something that we should think about as technology down the road.
So, if we do move forward for the referendum though, and say yes at the end of January, because I kind of am on board with you here, it's one thing to say, "Students can really use this technology," but I know we have examples in classrooms and things like that that we could share with the public to show them what is being done in a classroom, and that maybe a video or a snippet or something like that could be used. But for me, I don't need more information on that at this point, but if you do, or other board members do, to help you, again, help you make that decision?
Yeah, I, I think I, I've seen enough of it, enough initiatives that I'm not concerned about it, but I just would like us to think that we are thinking that way as forward-thinking as a board.
And is this middle paragraph yours too, Tom?
I didn't...
So, you want money for technology, is this you too?
Yeah.
Okay. So, to me, it is a continuum of your other questions that you've asked. What are our golden dreams of the money? I mean, that, if he's asking it, someone else might be asking it, but I think we answered...
Yeah, hearing what Tom has said now, I hear him saying, "These are things I get. We need to do a better job of educating our public if the board approves." That's what I hear you saying over and over again.
Yeah, I have, I mean, I think a little more, I've had a lot of talks with a lot of homeowners, with a lot of young families, and they're using technology all the time. And I just think this is something that, I think it's really paramount that we move this direction to some degree, and yet, I've seen the other extreme where all you are is isolated, doing computer things, and you've got to have a social interaction. So, there's a mix there, where you come together and maybe you can have a situation where you're worse, you can be more of a, students would do some things in a different way, I don't know. I, I just see a lot of technology, I see a lot of parents, I see a lot of, talk to a lot of students, and this is a constantly moving target, so I wish I had a more concise answer for you.
But I think they're getting where they need to go between now and the next board meetings.
Yeah, and it's not like something you gotta, "Yeah, we're going to get these three bullet points, and if they don't come through within six months, we're in trouble."
Yeah.
No, it's a wish list.
Yeah.
Because technology isn't the same, and as long as we think this way, I think we're thinking the right way. I can say it for you, right?
Yep.
Hey, from day one, when I was on board and met with Dr. Carlson and other people addressing what you're talking about, when you look at wishes and dreams and if our dreams are big, we have brought up the fact that we have a really diverse socio-economic group of students, and they want equal opportunity for students with devices and such. And this brings some equal playing field. And so, that to me is, it could be called a dream that's big, but it also is a dream that is normal. It's medium, it compares to where other districts are going to. And so, that question, if that comes up, that would be one of my responses, is that, yeah, maybe, you could call it big if you want to, but this is where we, as a country, want to take our kids and our school district, and homeowners looking ahead to do that, to level the playing field for every student who comes to our district in middle school and high school, that they have that. And the second thing is, just in terms of the social part of it and what we're doing with it, Jan has so many stories. If you've been out in the schools and you've visited, I've seen what our teachers are doing, so perhaps that is a cool thing to put out there, that when you go and see what's happening with these kids interacting and programming, and they're like, what, eight years old? You know, the ones who are 16 and 18 are even more profound. So, I agree that maybe that might be a good, maybe there's a presentation eventually when we do go out to the public that is a video presentation that shows the need somehow, that makes it tangible.
Well, just, I mean, I'll ask a quick thing I'll say, I know we're short on time a little bit, but, I mean, I came in an email today about some accountability bill, where you're going to, where you're going to measure schools a lot more. I have, I have nothing wrong with performance and measuring any of that, but you have to have it in the right context. You really do. And a teacher that has a morning class, has sports afternoon class, I mean, who knows? There's too many variables. And so, this type of mindset where it's not, well, there is a bad teacher, if he's bad because he's getting, his students do get bad grades, okay, well, he's a loser then, let's shoot him, go out and shoot him. No, you know, you know? There's a lot more to it, maybe.
I'll hold it.
Yeah. But you know what I'm saying? I think the parents are, the parents, the parents don't take responsibility half the time, and I know that's another homeowners' subject, but it's, I think this type of mentality may address that legislation that is more than likely going to come down the pipe. Sorry.
Dr. Carlson?
Well, thank you. I think we did work on question four. The only remaining piece really was to, I guess, Jay, as we bring that to a close, but then we actually don't want to forget the actual two questions, the draft of the questions that we'd be working on, that you actually, it's part of what, B or so on the, you've seen the two questions, the drafts. We continue to look, we continue to work with legal counsel, that has not been finalized, but we will bring that forward on the 12th, next Monday, and, but encourage you to continue looking at that, and if there are, we would be really looking for Monday night, part of the discussion in your decision to, whether or not to go forward, also the phrasing of the questions, because ultimately, on the 26th, as you make a decision as a board to move forward or not, part of that is also approval in moving forward, if that's the decision, of the two questions, and what do they look like. So, we still are waiting, Jay, correct, final feedback from legal counsel on the questions. We hope for Monday night to have that.
So, thank you for the insight. It will help us, and we need to be helping you too, because each of you will be asked to, on this issue, and we need to be comfortable administratively. It's our job to make sure that you're informed and can cast your vote on how we perceive. So, I think the dialogue's been helpful in that regard tonight, and given us some homework.
Yep, and we're here, so please communicate with us.
So, anything else to come before the board?
I would just like to ask that in the future, that we are open to people who disagree, that we respect people's opinion to disagree, and that we as a board, please do not go down a path of trying to thwart open information, discussion, and varied viewpoints. And that's all I ask.
I'd like to respond to that, and that is, if the board, if the majority of the board feels that the, if, say for example, not the minority, but somebody on the school board wanted to know how many teachers were left-handed this week, Jay is not a single board member's resource, he's the whole board's resource, so the whole board should decide...
resource, he's the whole board's resource, so the whole board should decide whether his time is used wisely or not.
I agree with that.
So if you ask, if somebody asks for something like, we'd like to know how many teachers have one shoe size, shoe different than the other side of his foot or, you know, and that's.
That's what we're talking about, that's what we're learning.
Exactly. If you ask for that kind of stuff and you say, if they're your kind of stuff, we're going to say, sure, of course, of course you're going to get that information, but you're drawing the line where either all, either everyone in my request or none of them, that's not the case.
You're going back to decision.
Which is reasonable, of course it's going to be given to you, but if it's not reasonable and the board as a whole does not think that it's worth the time and effort for him to spend three weeks of his time doing a thing that has to do for us in order to do that for the person requesting it, then the board decides that.
And that was a very eloquent way of explaining kind of the process that we were talking with with Matt Phail. And so I think at that, we will just, just let you dissect that a little bit and we will, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor?
No, I want to record it, no.
Okay, we are adjourned.
I do want to say, Gary, I don't appreciate the belittling comment because I was not asking ridiculous questions.
That wasn't a belittling comment at all.
About, about the fact that asking how many are left-handed, it trivializes the importance of the question.
But Tim, to some of the board members.
Hey, I think I had mentioned just the personnel issues. I would like your consideration, if you can make it work for a closed session at 6:00 prior to the board meeting because our, your attorney would be present as well.
Okay. Are you going to want this?
I'll have Christina follow up, help Christina follow up and this is a FYI.